Town Council Finance and General Purposes Committee Meeting Tonight, the 7th of October. I hope you've all got a virtual copy of the agenda. I've got a hard copy here, printed out. Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay. Agenda Item 1, Apologies. Have we received any apologies?
Yes.
Chair from councillor Huxley.
Councillor Huxley? Anyone else?
Yes, councillor Crittenden and councillor Young.
Okay, Crittenden and Young, councillors.
Excuse me, I'm here, councillor Huxley.
Oh, you are there, sorry, I thought.
Please just not give a response, she's there. She's not, she's got her...
Chair, could everybody mute, she's not talking?
Okay. Now, could I ask all members, if they're not speaking, to mute their mics? And if you do wish to speak, if you could unmute your mic, tell me who you are and I'll write your name down, because I haven't got the necessary facility for you to actually log on to speak automatically. Is that okay?
One.
Nod, 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 nod. Okay, so you can all turn your mics off if you're not speaking. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 2, Declarations of Interest. Are there any declarations of interest? From the silence prevailing, I suggest that no. We have minutes of the previous meeting of the 23rd of January. Well, that's a long time ago, isn't it? Are they regarded as a true and accurate record? Could I have a proposal and a second please, if that's appropriate? Now, Steve, councillor Albon is proposing, and councillor Green is seconding. Thumbs up. Agenda Item 4, Accounts for the first and second quarter. Eileen, over to you, and I will mute myself.
Thank you, chairman. You've all had the reports. It covers the first and second quarters. Obviously, through lockdown, we were still working and the accounts were looked after. What we did do, what I did do was keep councillor Campbell and councillor Stuart Piper informed of what we were spending, and that seemed to work very well. Okay, so as of the 29th of September, the current account has now received the second preset payment. So that account is, has 846,389 in it. Deposit account, which is where we look after the reserves, is 606,723. So at the moment, the accounts are healthy. Covid has helped the accounts stay healthy, I'm afraid, which is just under one and a half million sitting for us. The reserves are fine. The sinking fund, we have spent 7,700 just over on exterior repairs and painting to the custom house. That's all been done in July and August. The Radford House bequest, we still have just under 140,000 of that sitting in reserves. Monty Fury Woodland, no money has been spent. Equally, the neighbourhood planning, money hasn't been spent, all due to, mostly due to Covid. Okay, income received. Like I said, we've received the second preset payment, that's no problem. The custom house tenants are now paying their rent. They had a rent rest, I suppose, during lockdown. They weren't earning anything, and council agreed that they didn't have to pay rent, which is very kind. No chamber hire, for obvious reasons. The allotments tenants are now paying via BACS. The majority of them are still getting lots of cheques, it's not a problem either. And we've, so far to date, is 7,259 has come in. It straddles two financial years, so you can't get a true factual balance. V I C, nothing due, because we've been closed during lockdown. Small amount of deposit account interest, no civic income due to lockdown. But we have had donations towards our Covid effort, supporting the food banks. A total of 11,400 came in. And one of those donations, well, it could be in four stages. A resident of Ramsgate donated a hundred pounds in stages. In total, it was 400 from him. He has had letters of thanks on each donation. I made sure he was thanked for that. So that's the income, which is fine for now. Expenditure, to 29th of September, I won't bore you with figures, but the staffing budget is on track. And we currently have two part-time vacancies. One is for the mayor's driver, for obvious reasons, we put that on hold due to Covid. And also, we lost our V I C coordinator, but the town can cover that in another item. Town promotion budget is on track. The civic budget is very healthy. It's a budget of 15,000. Only 150 pounds has been spent for reasons of Covid, again. Your administration budget is also on track, there's no problems there. Now we get on to the custom house and Radford house. They have a combined budget of 160,000. That also includes Charlotte Court and will also eventually include Albion Gardens. It's all on track, we don't have a problem there. Charlotte Court, we've spent just under 1,500 on getting that up to scratch, and it looks really good, so I'm told. The custom house and Radford house combined expenditure is just over 69,000. That's the cleaning, general repairs, rent, electric, gas and water over those two properties. The vehicles, obviously, we've been using them for the Covid help that we've been giving to the food banks. And some of that fuel budget has actually, what has been spent on fuel, has come out of the donations towards food bank help that we've given. Allotments budget, the budget is 20,000. We've spent 8,851, water, electricity and capital items. The income from the allotments basically balances, balances the expenditure each year. Allotments are not for profit, and that's absolutely fine, I can assure you. Moving on, I'd like to look at the Ramsgate fund. It's very healthy. We have just under 26,500 left. Could I ask that councillors encourage applications for this, if they can? It's on the website, but it would be good to receive some applications for November's council meeting, if possible. The events budget, 72,500 was set aside for that. It's very, very up in the air. Obviously, events haven't been able to go ahead. A few have. But we have a remaining balance of 24,150 to spend on events, if you wish. 10,000 has been set aside from the unspent kite surfing award. Towards active Ramsgate, they've got a new initiative. I think the town promotion committee dealt with that. And I think Cheryl is coming back with a report to finalise that and for you to decide if that will go ahead. The balance is ever-changing, depending on whether events take place and is reported to various committees and council as and when information is available, rather than just hold it back for the town promotion committee at the moment. Town improvements, we've spent 16,779. This is the technicians working all areas of the parish. The budget is 60,000, again, it's very healthy. Visiting information centre has been closed. The budget is 12,000. It's only spent 700, just under 700 pounds. So the budget is sitting there, we haven't used it at all. Our ladies have come, our ladies and, I think it's one gentleman, has come back sort of this week or last week. Okay, so finally, Covid support. The figure I've given you is 8,730 to support food banks. It doesn't increase staff costs. Totalling it all up and taking off donations from our KCC member, the actual cost to council so far is just under 13,000 pounds, supporting the food banks, et cetera. And we have 10,000 for judicial review, that's all sorted as well. So the recommendation for me is that we have a healthy bank balance. The accounts are going very, very well. And I'd like to ask that you note the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eileen. Any questions, queries of Eileen in respect of the accounts?
Yes, please, councillor Piper.
Hold on. I've got councillor Albon first, councillor Green second, and councillor Piper third. Councillor Albon.
Thank you, Chair. Eileen, you mentioned about the Ramsgate fund. I can advise councillor Huxley and myself, met with, there's a new group, which is now fully registered, at Camden Square. And we talked to the residents there this morning, and they are going to be submitting submitting some proposals for money. And certainly, although I haven't seen it, but talking with them this morning, it seems like something I think that we could support. But obviously, we're waiting to see that end. So we are, we've done our bit.
Thank you.
Councillor Green.
Yeah, two items, Chair. The Covid effort, did only one of our county councillors support us?
Yes, councillors.
Councillor Huxley.
Thank you. The other thing is, in the events...
You've frozen, David.
It looks as though, is that better?
Now YouTube stop, start again.
The events budget, it looks as though it's highly unlikely that we will have a Christmas light to turn on or a fireworks display this year. We have been working on some alternatives that will, that will cost quite a bit less, but might at least make some sort of splash for the Christmas period. The first is to add to our lighting display in the town by LED light strings on the few trees that are in the town centre. And to sort of advertise that, to promote a sort of Christmasy type play on YouTube, to take people around and show them the displays of our Christmas lights and the trees, to try and encourage people to come in and spend their money in the town.
When they say, sorry, David, about your town promotion committee, are you?
Together, well, we need to get on with it, because it's only a few months now to, when it would be happening at the end of November. Together, that would cost about 5K. And I just hope that the council can support it.
This is a proposal from the town promotion committee, is it, David?
It hasn't actually got to the town promotion committee yet, but...
You're confident it will go through and will be supported by them?
If it's supported here, I'm sure it would be supported there.
Okay, members. Obviously, councillor Green is correct. I doubt very much we're going to have a mass lights turn on at Christmas. But we do need to promote the town for some Christmas shopping to aid and assist the sustainability of central Ramsgate. What do we think of councillor Green's idea for the lights on the trees that are currently in Ramsgate? And a YouTube play or video to support that particular project? Members?
Yeah, Chair, I support that. I think, you know, we should, we should do something. And unless anyone else has got anything to propose, I would support councillor Green. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to input to this? Councillor Piper, you've got your thumbs up to the idea? That's a nod, okay. Well, councillor Ara.
Yes, I support it as well.
Okay, right, so there's a proposal from councillor Green. It's going to cost in the region of about 5,000 pounds, which would be considerably less than the fireworks display and the switch-on event, yeah, which probably, which won't take place, it will replace. So all that, if those two don't take place, all those in favour, please wave your hands. Let's say all those opposed to it, rather than anything else, because that's probably a better way. But anybody opposed to this? Anybody abstaining? So that's proposed by councillor Green, seconded by me, and it's going to be given a go ahead. Okay, councillor Green?
Thank you very much.
Councillor Piper, you are next on the list to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick things. Eileen mentioned the 10,000 pounds for the judicial review. Can we confirm the full 10,000 has now been paid?
Yes, we can. I sign the cheque.
And clearly, it was paid whilst there was a shortfall?
Yes.
Okay, it's just the organisers are tweeting all over the place that they've got way more than they needed. Just, I thought I'd throw that in there.
Well, at the time it was paid, there was a shortfall in the funding for the judicial review. And we, and the council applied the proposition that was passed by the council, I think, seven to two, or seven to, eight to two, or something. Okay, so, sorry, anything else?
Yes, the other thing was, Eileen also mentioned a couple of things. The FEN funding budget has got plenty of cash solution around in it. And the civic budget has got plenty of money flushing around in it. We did have a discussion a year or so ago about replacing some of the aged robes and expensive items of clothing for ceremonial duties. I'm just wondering whether the use of some creative accounting for events and civic budget can be used to affect the replacement garments that are needed for the mayor and possibly the town clerk and the assistant town clerk, and so on. Members might remember, we discussed this a year or so ago, and got some initial quotes. So it's a kind of a call for some creative accounting to make that happen, perhaps a bit sooner than we might have thought. Thank you.
Okay, so it's a proposal that money's not spent on other projects throughout this fiscal year. Be looked at to see if they can replace ceremonial garments, yeah, that are used by various members and officials within Ramsgate Town Council, yes? Okay, so nod. Councillor, anyone might like to speak on that? Councillor Green and then councillor Albon?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not against that, but I think it should compete. Be put in a part competing with any other proposals that come forward, perhaps at the next F and GP or council meeting.
Yes, okay, good idea. Councillor Albon.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm the same as David with that, nothing against that at all. And bearing in mind, of course, that next year is the 200th anniversary of having a Royal Harbour. So that may well be, I think that's rather a good idea. Instead of going out all bedraggled, then let's, let's put a bit of spit and polish on it.
Okay, okay. So we'll leave it to later in the year or early in the next year to determine what monies are going to be available. And then we'll see whether or not there's surplus money is available for this particular project. Yes, agreed? Everyone agreed? Anyone opposed? No. I'd like to make a comment. You state within the accounts, Eileen, that the Radford house and custom house, cleaning, general repairs, rent, electric and gas and water, currently comes to 69,118 pounds and 99p. Is it possible to actually separate custom house and Radford house costs for those particular projects? Cleaning, general repairs, rent, electric and gas and water, in future?
Chairman, I can do that for you. They are separated on the account system, but they come under one heading of property. But I can certainly do that for you for your meetings, et cetera. No problem at all.
So all our different properties should be individually accounted, so we can see at a glance what each property is actually costing the council and the residents of Ramsgate. Okay? So that's a future account. Okay? Any other questions or comments for Eileen on these quarter accounts, first and second quarter accounts?
Councillor Nixon, I can just say something.
Who is it? Councillor Nixon?
No, just to go back to Stuart Piper's comment about the organisers are tweeting everything about Manstone's monies has been reached with a J R. As far as I'm, as far as I know, Jenny Dawes isn't even on Twitter, so I'm not exactly sure where he's got that information from. And from what I hear, monies haven't been reached, there still is a shortfall. That's just to put the matter correct. Thank you.
Okay, so you believe there's still a shortfall? Okay, okay, well, it certainly was a shortfall when the full 10,000 pounds was actually passed over from Ramsgate for the judicial review. Right, so move on to the next agenda item. Fair reading, so I'll find the... Where are we? Ah, here we are. Righty ho. Agenda item five, oh, sorry, we note that report. Noted? Thank you, members. Terms of reference, Radford house and custom house committee, Mr Stiles, over to you.
All right. Yes, the terms of reference were agreed by the Radford house and custom house committee last week. We said at that meeting that what we would do is we would give it to F and GP to note, unless there's, obviously, if there's some lacuna in there somewhere that the committee feels should be changed in some way, that could be incorporated. And then it will go to full council, the next meeting in November, for ratification and that, and then it will be adopted as the terms of reference for that committee. It's been a long time, it should have, it should have been done ages ago, but, you know, Covid, like everything else, has thrown everything into into some disarray. And so this is putting this right, the committee now has its terms of reference already. Okay, that's all I need to say.
Thank you very much, Richard. Any comments, questions about the terms of reference for the Radford house committee members? Councillor Green?
It's a bit of a side issue, really, but I think we need to have meetings a bit more frequently than once a year.
Okay. Would you propose a particular timescale, or would you rather leave that to the project moving forward? Or do you want to say three monthly, six monthly? What do you want, councillor Green?
I'm happy to leave it to the chairman, but I'd just thought a minimum of six monthly.
Councillor Albon? Can you unmute yourself, councillor Albon?
I was attempting to, Chair. My thinking was slow. Yeah, I've not got a problem with that at all. I was going to suggest three monthly, but I, but I think you're probably right, six monthly, because things are, once the planning application's in, which it is, so things are going to be slowing up. So, yeah, I would do it on a six-month period.
Okay, could I suggest that the proposal would be a minimum of six monthly intervals? But as the project moves forward, and as and when required, that may increase to three months, if required. Is that acceptable to members? All those opposed to that, please show or speak. That's silent, so unanimously agreed. Thank you very much. Six monthly and three monthly, as and when and if required, by the, by the chair of that committee or members of the committee. We move now on to agenda item six. Vista Information Centre Manager Volunteer Coordinator Vacancy, Mr Stiles. Richard.
During the early part of the lockdown, the V I C manager resigned, unfortunately. And the V I C itself wasn't operating. The volunteers, though, have taken upon themselves, very kindly, I've put three here, but actually, it's probably, I think there's four now, are actually operating the V I C on a sort of general basis. I mean, they're not there all the time, they're only there for two or three hours a day, four or five times a week. But there is now a service running, so the normalcy is beginning to return. Hopefully, when the vaccine is nigh and everybody gets their injections and we can return to normal in some essential form, I think we need to talk about having a replacement V I C manager. I think the volunteers are quite happy that they carry on at the moment, but I think they need somebody to guide them, help them, sort out their problems, act as their spokesperson, whatever, all the things that a V I C manager does. I'm looking at the thing, I'm just wondering whether the county committee might be minded to, in the interim, certainly, for Kim to do some of the administrative stuff that the V I C does. So if they need leaflets ordered, or they want this, that and the other done. It's not requiring her to actually go down there and do any of the V I C stuff. She could do that, because she's not doing any civic stuff at the moment, because there's nothing going on. And it would give her an opportunity to see how it goes, see how it went. It could be, in the long term, that you might want to consider dividing up the post. Instead of having a V I C manager to do it, is to have somebody to do all the recruiting, because we obviously need more and more volunteers. And the volunteers we've had are very good, but they've been there some time, and they obviously, they, you know, like everybody like me, they're all getting of a certain age. And they need, they may, if we can reduce their hours, so their voluntary hours reduce a little bit, so that they can manage their lives a bit easier, that's going to be a good thing. So I'm looking, wondering whether we should find a recruiter and somebody to do the administration and do it that way. And possibly, Kim could do the, carry on doing the administration part of it. And if we find somebody, I mean, we could talk to the town promoter, who does talk to all sorts of people, and maybe add some, maybe an hour or two to her, or a few hours to a weekly thing, so that she can do some recruiting. But I'm open to all sorts of ideas. If you think we, we should just have a V I C manager, as we've had before, and we should group one, I'm minded to, you know, do whatever's instructed.
This is a proposal for some time in the future, when there's a vaccine and we turn to some form of normality, is it?
Yeah, probably, I don't know, early spring next year.
Yeah, yes.
It's just something to think about, it's nothing to worry about now. I'm just trying to flag this up for the future, so we've got some kind of plan.
Councillor Green?
I don't think, I don't think the town promoter has time, Chair. And I can see advantages in the person doing the recruiting for the V I C to have experience of working in the T I C, so that she really knows the job.
Yeah, I, councillor Green, I don't think our town promoter has time to start running or administering the V I C. I think it's a discussion that we need to have at a later date. Things are working at the moment, things are very quiet. Particularly the V I C, there's very little leaflets, there's no leaflets about due to Covid. Obviously, if the staff, you feel the staff as town clerk, can manage the administration, Kim, you mentioned, that's entirely your decision, I believe. You manage the staff, their workload. If you believe she's got that capacity, then I'm sure it's up to you to determine whether or not she can do that. That's no problem for any of us, I wouldn't thought. Anybody opposed to that particular view? Please speak. So I'll leave that to you to determine, Richard, whether or not you believe that Kim has the capacity to oversee the V I C at the moment, the logistics of the V I C. Recruiting is something that isn't necessary at the moment because of the lack of footfall within the V I C and the lack of services provided by the V I C. There's very few leaflets. I've been in there a couple of times myself, custom house. No leaflets on display because of the Covid-19. And until that changes, and we go back to some form of normality, I think we can carry on as we are. Okay, members?
Yeah? Right, we move on to agenda seven, the last one. Town clerk's report.
Right, very quickly, we had a notification from our bank, Unit of Tru- Right, very quickly, we had a notification from our bank, Unity Trust, telling us they were no going, no longer going to pay any interest at all on the money that we've deposited, and what's more, they were going to take back some money that they had given us, because they had wrongly calculated the interest, and they were going to take, I didn't, was it two or three hundred quid or something from us?
Leaving swines.
Alternatives, I'm suggesting that we think about an alternative. I've mentioned the C C L A before, they are an industry-wide, they do special interest accounts for town and parish councils, and also some of the districts, I think Canterbury's got money with them, and a lot of churches and parochial church councils, like St Lawrence and St George, and Georges and Georges, and et cetera, et cetera, have got accounts for them, and they've got several different accounts. One, I've given you the details of them, one is an overnight deposit account, which is spread around various different banks and financial institutions throughout the world, not just in the UK. Then there's a property, a property-based account, and then there's a long-term investors' account. I think, I'm suggesting that we dip our toe in the water and transfer, say, a hundred thousand to the C C L A on the overnight account, on the, on the deposit account, which is low, the lowest risk account, and we talk about the other account. I don't recommend the third one, because we're not professional investors, none of us, especially not me, and I think we should, if we do anything with the C C L A, it should be the overnight deposit account, and it should be the property bond to some extent, and I think Eileen should be given the instructions to go out into the market and see what other reasonably low-risk accounts that we can find for some of our money, because we, while we, obviously, we don't need to risk our money over too much, we do have a duty to the, to the tax base to at least get some interest from it, rather than just sitting in an account and it goes into no interest at all. I mean, we might as well, you know, I might as well put it in a safe bag here, rather than, than leaving it in the bank for all the good it's doing. The only thing is the safety of it, I mean, it's very safe where it is, but it's not doing anything. So, I'm just saying, a small amount, we've got one and a half million in the account, a hundred thousand is not going to make a difference one way or the other, and we can see how it goes. And then also to look for other accounts with the other banks, I mean, I often get a thing from one or two of the merchant banks come along to me and ask me whether we would like to put money in it, and see what else there is on offer. It would have to be, I'd have to take, we'd have to take advice and various other things if it gets a bit technical, but I think the C C L A on deposit account is a minimal, you know, even I can understand that one.
Okay, councillor Alden, then councillor Green.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I, I, I wouldn't want to make any decisions on that now, not with, not without seeing, not without any, any investigation being undertaken about other places that we may be able to put our money, and then for us to then take, take a look at those before we put any money anywhere.
Yeah, councillor Green?
Not me, Chair, I was scratching my hair.
Oh, we can read, sorry. Anybody else wish to comment on this? I've got to be honest with you, I, I balked a bit when the town clerk said reasonably low risk, I think absolutely very little risk whatsoever, I've got to be honest, particularly in the febrile times that we're experiencing at the moment. I don't know what the economy is going to do, I don't know what interest rates are going to do, I don't know where banks are going to go, but I really don't know, and I'm like the, like the town clerk, I'm certainly no expert in monetary matters. Yes, I, you know, I think we should hitch our wagon to the most profitable, long-term, largest company that offers the greatest stability and the less risk. Whether or not we earn any interest for, in the short term, should not be the primary concern, as far as I'm concerned. Safety of our monies is certainly the most primary concern, as far as I'm concerned, certainly in the febrile, as I say, the febrile circumstances that we're in at the moment. Any other members got any views on this particular issue? So, we'll hold this in abeyance until further and better information from the town clerk and, and the deputy town clerk is prevailing, yes? Anybody opposed to that view? No, that's what we will do then, thank you very much. That ends the agenda items for this evening. Thank you very much, members and officers. Keep safe, keep well.